Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. I just want to ask how you'd like to see this meeting go. A lot of times it really irritates me when people sit up here and read this stuff to you, and then other times... So would you like us to read each one of these? And see if there's any discussion? Do we have extra copies? No?
They're on the back table.
So if you want to grab a copy on the back table, maybe that will help you make your decision.
There's some light reading.
Any thoughts?
It's like a trend with a couple more.
You can probably read them. I'll try to speak up.
I know. Shall we all move our chairs forward?
Yes. Come on in. There's no need to have everybody.
It's a complaint about people not being able to...
Move your tables forward.
Okay, we'll get right started. There's a lot in here. The actual meeting is Thursday, May 16th at 6:00 at the New Meadows School, West Bath School. Article 1, choose a moderator by written ballot to preside at said meeting. Joe Mary has agreed to moderate if nominated. Article 2, see what town, what southern town will vote to raise an appropriate for general government wages. Select Board recommends 3 to 0. Budget Committee recommends 3 to 0. You guys all have these figures? Do you want a packet? Oh, you have to look on that. So on Article 2, any questions? Does anyone need... The Select Board and Budget Committee recommended a 3.2 increase in wages. This article includes all positions except for firefighters, ballot election courts, and planning board members. Article 3, to see what southern town will vote to raise, will vote to raise an appropriate for insurance and benefits. Payroll taxes, $28,000. And again, there's all the different retirement help, all the totals listed there. Payroll taxes and retirement are based on the recommended 3.2 wage increases. Suzanne, you want to read a couple of articles?
Absolutely. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of 5 MRS Statute 18252-C, PL 2021, Chapter 286, as allowed by the Main Peers Rule Schedule 803. The town agrees to adopt the provisions of this statute enacted by PL 2021, Chapter 26, is allowed by Main Peers Rule 803, for its non-participating employees with optional membership who previously declined to participate in main pairs and eligible employees, and to comply with the following requirements. Beginning in 2024, to equally offer eligible employees who have been employed for less than five years the opportunity to join main pairs on a correct prospective basis during open enrollment period from September 1 through November 1, and to provide main pairs with documentation of each election made by the eligible employees under this provision, and to withhold employee contribution for employees who join under this provision on after-tax basis, and to remit them to main pairs. Section 2, to allow, to authorize the town administration to sign the amendment, amended agreement between the employer and the main public employee retirement system. This is a new option offered by the main public employee retirement system that employers may choose to adopt. An employee may have the opportunity to opt into the system until they reach five years from the initial date of employment, rather than having to make decisions immediately upon hire. Any questions? Article 5, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and to appropriate for town administration. This includes office expense, computer technology, assessing, select board contingency, voting, office cleaning, and building maintenance totaling $184,300. The Select Board recommends 3 to 0. The Budget Committee also recommends. Any questions? Article 6, to see what sum the town will vote to ra... I'm sorry, let me go back one piece of that. Building maintenance includes cleaning and paper supplies, alarm, pest control, and lawn care. Article 6, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for legal. The Select Board recommends 3 to 0, $20,000. The Budget Committee recommends the same. This includes ordinance review, policy review, assessing, personnel, and other items that arise. Article 7, to see what the sum, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general assistance. Select Board recommends 3 to 0, $2,000. The Budget Committee recommends the same. An appropriation will be requested annually, rather than carrying the balance forward from year to year.
What's general assistance?
Welfare.
And we get reimbursed for that, for saving well.
It's what?
It's welfare.
Oh.
And we receive that reimbursement back from the state.
Also, people having emergencies with housing or heat or that sort of thing.
We had, we had a balance that we actually did not carry forward, in the back of the accounts, the budget. Article 8, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for protection. This includes ambulance service, hydrants, fire department operations, fire department incentive, and animal control. This, the budget, the Select Board recommended 3 to 0, and the Budget Committee recommends as well, $216,210. This includes a 3.2% increase in firefighter incentive. Article 9, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for per diem firefighters. Select Board recommends 3 to 0, $60,890. The Budget Committee recommends the same. This request is for current staffing plus one additional shift Monday through Friday. This would put a second person on during the week with the fire chief totaling 3,112 hours.
Can you talk about that?
So the fire chief's... Nope, is he here? Oh, we actually, absolutely, we can talk about it.
Yes. So right now, for the past two years, Saturday, Sunday, we have a firefighter in-house, 8 to 4. During the week, we have the fire chief, who plays a couple of different roles. This right here would add a person along with the fire chief, Monday through Friday, and then we would continue what we've currently had for the past two years, Saturday, Sunday.
So this also allowed him to have a second person with him when he goes on calls, which he's been going on calls individually, which is not recommended in all cases.
Yeah, at times during the week. That's the hardest time that we have with coverage, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. That would put somebody here with the chief, like she just said. It's a safer option for the town and for us in the fire department.
Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all dog licensing fees and penalties collected during the fiscal year of 2024, 2025, except for the recording fee that must be retained by the municipal clerk pursuant to the state law as additional payment to the animal control officer for services rendered to the town. The Select Board recommended 3 to 0. Fees and penalties amount approximately $1,200 to $1,300 per year. Article 11, to see what the sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for harbors and waterways. This includes shellfish warding contract and harbor master totaling $11,600. The Select Board recommended 3 to 0. The Budget Committee recommended the same. The shellfish warding contract with Saginaw County estimates 12 hours per month to office and share patrol duties. Article 12, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for sanitation. This includes solid waste, hazardous waste, and composting totaling $16,600. The Select Board recommended 3 to 0. The Budget Committee recommended the same. The town of Brunswick and City of Bath hosts hazardous waste collection events in the spring and the fall. West Bath plans to participate in both events. Three totes are available for compost through Garbagey Garden. The town is currently entitled to collect compost, which will be used on town property. Article 13, to see what the sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public works. This includes general roads, Birch Point Road construction, salt shed, streetlights, and snow removal totaling $1,113,260. The Select Board recommended 3 to 0. The Budget Committee recommended the same. Article 14, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for community agencies. This includes Bath Area Food Bank, Bath Area Seniors Activity Center, New Hope Midcoast, Spectrum Generations, and... totaling $7,901. The Select Board recommended 3 to 0. The Budget Committee recommended the same. Article 15, to see what sum, to see what sum the town will vote, will vote to raise and appropriate for patent-free library. The Select Board recommends 3 to 0 of $41,332. The Budget Committee recommended the same. To see, Article 16, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for planning board stipends totaling $3,000. The Select Board recommends 3 to 0. The End of Budget Committee recommends the same. This is $50 per meeting for the chair and $25 per meeting for members. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to give all money received from the state of Maine for snowmobile registrations over to the, to the Over the Hill ATD Club for maintenance for their systems or network of snowmobile trails, on the condition that those trails will be open to the public for snowmobile purposes at no charge in the snow season, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into an agreement with the club under such terms and conditions as it deemed advisable for that purpose. All municipalities in the state receive an annual refund from the Maine Bureau of Parks and Lands to be used for all trail maintenance. Since West Bath does not have the, have staff to maintain snowmobile trails, we would like to give the approximate $500 received each year over to the Over the Hill ATD Club. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to transfer all remaining but unexpended funds at the end of the fiscal year 2023, 2024, from the Fire Department operations to the Fire Department Capital Fund, to be used for future capital building, vehicle, and/or equipment expenditures.
Is there a cap on it, or what kind of numbers are we talking over here? A thousand dollars, a ton of thousand dollars?
That, I will have to look.
It is a rough thought.
Yeah, there's no cap on it.
There's no cap, but I don't have...
Yeah, we don't have those figures. We can have them at town meeting.
No, I mean, do you have that?
Do you know?
It is, it's not a sizable amount.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, everything that we plan for is pretty set.
My Article 19, yes. Article 19, to see if the vote, if the town will vote to transfer all remaining but unexpended funds at the end of fiscal year 2023, 2024, from general roads to the general roads capital fund, to be used for future capital road expenditures.
Same question. Would it be a sizable amount or not sizable amount?
That was, I think, a sizable amount, and it just, it rolled into this year's for like Birch Point and some of the other roads that we have out there.
So the $400, $400, you guys, for like some money that is global in the share?
Yes.
All right.
Is that, was that enough? Is that you good with that?
Yeah.
I know it has to be dangerous. I've got all I can use. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to use its discretion for the following purposes. The remaining $40,528.89 in funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Fire, these are the items proposed, fire hall rail roof, rear entrance door, and insulating cellular shades. ADA accessible door openers to be installed at the town hall and the fire hall. Town hall generator and town hall exterior building repairs. Select Board recommends 3 to 0. Budget Committee recommends the same. ARPA funds must be committed by December 31, 2024. The Select Board will vote to approve each disbursement of funds before they are spent.
Excuse me, those are COVID money?
That's COVID money, ARPA, yep.
Do we have a list of priorities among these things?
Those were, so there is, we had a list, and yes, we had it. So there's the fire hall rail roof, needs repair, and the rear entrance door. The insulated shades are to keep...
Okay, so it's in this order, the priority?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we, we expect that amount to hopefully cover those expenditures. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from the unassigned fund balance surplus to be deposited in the long-term capital fund reserve account. Select Board, Select Board recommends a no vote, 3 to 0. The Budget Committee recommends the same. The Investment Committee recommended December of 2019 that the Select Board include an article on each, on more each year as an expenditure and replacement strategy, up to a total of $880,000. This year, the committee is recommending a no vote.
I want to speak to that.
Yeah, I'm Paul Coombs, I'm the Investment Committee. The reasoning for that was, was this. The fund is adequately funded right now, accruing interest at about $30,000 rate per year. And there are no big expenses on the horizon, which we, at least, any that we know of, there are always surprises, but hopefully not. So we're very cognizant of how much inflation there's been in the last three or four years, and I'm sure every one of us too has a budget being squeezed. And so, given that the county levy and the school budget is probably going to go up this year, we're very cognizant of those two situations. Those increases plus the inflationary impact on our budgets. We wanted to try to mitigate the tax rate as much as we can, so we felt that we could forego, for this year, the addition to the long-term capital improvement fund. I think that's everything.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on that?
Article 22, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to appropriate any anticipated revenues not otherwise designated for specific purposes to reduce the fiscal year 2024, 2025 tax amendment. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to appropriate for unassigned funds, the unassigned fund balance surplus, an amount not to exceed 80% of the total non-capital expenditures for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024, and not otherwise appropriated herein to reduce the fiscal year 2024, 2025 tax commitment. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following rules and optimizations governing the collection of property tax for fiscal year 2024, 2025. To fix the date of October 15, 2024, as a date when the fiscal year 2024, 2025 tax shall become due and payable, and to charge an 8.5% unpaid taxes after that date. This is the minimum interest rate that can be charged per Title 36 MRS Statute 505.4. I'm sorry, maximum.
It's like you said, minimum, it's the maximum.
It's the maximum rate. Potato, potato, yes, no, it's maximum. To authorize a tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes, no interest shall be payable on any prepayment. To authorize the prepayment of tax abatements approved by the Select Board assessor from the tax overlay, or if necessary, from unassigned fund balance surplus. To set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated tax at 4% for the fiscal year 2024 or 2025, the allowable interest rate on abated tax is also set by the state. To authorize the Select Board to dispose of town-owned personal property with a value over $500 and deemed by the Select Board to be surplus on such terms as it deems advisable. To authorize the Select Board to direct the treasurer to waive foreclosure of real estate taxes, real estate, real property tax, lien mortgage, if it determines such course of action to be in the best interest of the town. To authorize the Select Board to sell and dispose of all tax-acquired property held under, held by the town on such terms as it deems advisable, and to execute quitclaim deeds for such property, except that the Select Board shall use the special sales process required by 36 MRS Statute 943-C for qualified homestead property if it chooses to sell to anyone other than the former owners. This language is an art, the language in this article is required by main statute. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to apply for and accept state, federal, or other grants on behalf of the town for municipal purposes, including when necessary. Be assorted to sign grant contracts, documents, and other paperwork, and accept the conditions that accompany grant funds, and to appropriate and expend such funds for authoring purposes, and the Select Board deems, as the Select Board deems, is in the best interest of the town during the ensuing fiscal year. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept or reject conditional or unconditional gifts of real property. If acceptance of no single gift would obligate the town to incur liabilities that total $1,000 or more per year, as determined by the Select Board. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept or reject donations of personal property, and/or to accept or reject gifts of money to the various accounts of the town for the ensuing fiscal year, and to appropriate those monies donated for specific purposes. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to maintain and exercise, if appropriate, its right to take river herring from the New Meadows Lake, consistent with the terms and conditions specified at the March 1977 town meeting. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to maintain a fishway on Winning Gas Lake, and to exercise its right to take river herring in accordance with the terms and conditions specified at the June 1988 town meeting, and in agreement with the City of Bath and Town of Pittsburgh. Article 30, shall it ordnance, entitled 2024 Amendments to the Town of West Bath Land Use Ordinance to Comply with HP 1489, LD 2003, to enact, to act to implement the recommendations of the Commission to Increase Housing Opportunities in Maine by Study, Zoning, and Land Use Restrictions, being enacted beginning July 1, 2024. The proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office, and will be available at the town meeting. Article 31, shall it ordnance, entitled 2024...
Sorry to stop you, but because this is also a public hearing, do we want to stop at Article 30 and make sure that there are no questions? And just explain this a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, you do, you do.
Yeah. Just to satisfy the public hearing side of it.
Do you know what LD 2003 is for, accessory dwelling units? So the state of Maine has authorized every parcel in the state to be granted an accessory dwelling, presuming it meets with certain ordinance conditions. So if you have a well, the water has to be, if you add an accessory dwelling, the water has to be produced enough to add to that accessory dwelling, as also compliance with added septic to comply with another bedroom. I know, I don't know where, did, did we hardly put in a minimum timeframe that they gave in the ordinance?
The Planning Board hasn't met to discuss any of that yet. So that would need to be done at a special town meeting, or with the other land use ordinance changes.
We put in, this is to, they expect the state of Maine, by 2030, to have a shortage of 80,000 housing units. So this is used to bring forth housing strategy for the state. And we looked at making a recommendation to have a minimum of, and I propose 90 days, I don't know whether that is from Planning Board, so that the minimum rental should be a 90-day timeframe, so that you're not building weekly rentals, which is not really bringing housing to the area as much as a 90-day or more timeframe would. That's kind of up in the air, but this is required state ordinance moving forward. There's not a lot that we're going to be able to do to get beyond that.
Does it apply to developed plots and undeveloped plots?
I believe it does, and I wish there was somebody here from the Planning Board to answer that question. I, I believe it's every parcel in the state of Maine has been granted. Even if, even if you're a one, two, or three-acre zone, that every, of those parcels now have the option. You have to meet the setback, and you have to meet the well and septic requirements. But outside of that, and I, and I know that there's some language that we put in there on the size of the dwelling, square footage and whatnot, as part of that as well. But it's, it's coming, we just have to figure out how we're going to get. We can make our ordinance more stringent than what the state is recommending, but we have to have at least what the state is recommending.
What is the square footage minimum based on?
I'm good, I'm sat in, I was part of that meeting during, I listened to that meeting at the Planning Board. I'm, I think it's, it was a percentage, I want to say 75% of the initial dwelling. But I'm not positive, unfortunately, I don't have the language in front of me, but I bet that if you give you a thousand-square-foot house, you could then build a 700 square-foot dwelling, but I don't know if that's...
Less than maximum, but it seems like the minimum is pretty big. It doesn't allow for a tiny house, I guess.
It could allow for a tiny house, actually. I believe it can. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a minimum, but the components that are mandatory are water and septic and setback, and that's...
Yeah, I think I've read it, okay.
But, but that, is that, that language is actually, I believe, town-driven versus state-driven on size?
And I believe the regulations are more towards occupied time. So they're leaning more towards a structure that would be more of like an in-law apartment rather than an Airbnb, right? So that's where like the 90-day timeframe comes from?
Yeah, it's, I'm just asking about the, because I, I read it as a minimum size of like...
I don't believe that's the case, but that, it doesn't mean that we don't have it in our language, and we could, we, again, we can make our language more stringent than what the state is recommending, but we have to have, follow their minimum language. And I apologize, I didn't study that.
Do we have the ordinances online as well? We do. I can touch on some of that, although I'm not seeing the dimensions. I believe the dimensions you're referring to, it's an either-or. The intention of the Planning Board was not to allow an accessory, accessory dwelling unit that was larger than the existing building. So you could either go by a percentage of the existing building or a footprint, whichever was more beneficial. They gave a little bit of flexibility there.
Okay, Article 31, shall it ordnance, entitled 2024 Amendments to the Town of West Bath Land Units, Land Use Ordinance Regarding Public and Private Campgrounds Being Enacted. The purpose, proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office, and will be available at the town meeting. Any questions? Do you want to speak to that?
Basically, what we're asking is for a definition of campgrounds to be in the ordinance. It wasn't clear before. We've spoken to the Planning Board, the Select Board, and the Select Board has spoken to the town attorney, excuse me, and we couldn't be sure whether a campground was allowed in town or not. And the ordinance, the way that we've written it, is that campgrounds, sites of five or more, public or private campgrounds will not be allowed in rural residential West Bath. It leaves it open for the town to have other areas if they so choose.
So actually, if you go to, two pages later, there's a whole thing on LD 2003 in here. So it lays out, it says page 21 in here, in your notes, and, and all of the language that I studied beforehand. So it lays out everything for you on here.
And what we did is looked at the language from about 10 surrounding towns and how they handle campground, so that we want to farm the areas.
And right after that, there's the entire description of the campground ordinance we were just touching on. So...
All of this information is on the back.
It's on the back table, but it's, I, I only got so far. So let's see, we are on 32. Article 32, shall it ordnance, entitled 2024 Amendments to the Town of West Bath Marine Resource Conservation Ordinance Being Enacted. I bet that's in here too, if we look at the board. The proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office, and we, and will be available at the town meeting. Article 33...
Anyone summarize that?
Do you want to take this part?
Yeah, do you guys want me to take this?
Yeah.
So this is mostly completely clerical, as recommended by Department of Marine Resources. So this is just to bring us into compliance with their regulations.
And then, and there is a... Article 33, shall the town vote to adopt the 2024 Comprehensive Plan for the Town of West Bath? Said plan to replace existing comprehensive plan in its entirety. And there are copies right here, also. Article 34, written ballot required by statute to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit. Established for the Town of West Bath by the state law, if the admissible budget approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. The proposed budget will not exceed the property tax levy limit.
You have a calculation in your package, too. And I can provide that to anybody who wants it.
And that looks like this. Take-home paperwork. Take-home paperwork for all of us. Let's see, and education, I'm going to leave that up to education. Do you want me to read it for you, or do you want to-
I'm happy to have you continue reading.
Okay, you are still kind, you're a giver. Okay, here we go. Article thirty-five. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for regular instruction. School board directors recommends two million, that would be a write-out, two million, seven hundred and twenty-three, three hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents. The budget committee recommends the same. Explanation: This article covers salaries and benefits for regular education teachers and support personnel, as well as all, as well as classroom supplies, equipment, books, and repairs for grades K through five. This article also includes contracted services for pre-k kindergarten students and tuition costs for students in grades six through twelve. Any questions? Keith is going to answer for you. Article thirty-six. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for School board director recommends eight hundred and nineteen thousand, not eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-nine cents. The budget committee recommends the same. This article provides salaries and benefits for special education teachers and support personnel, K through twelve program tuition, staffing, out-of-district placement, and professional services. Any questions?
So, I just have, it's just a mathematical question on thirty-five or thirty-six. What were the, this year's numbers versus last year in percentage terms?
In terms of the bottom line, or in terms of students?
In terms of the warrant sum for thirty-five, in terms of dollars, yeah.
So, thirty-five is an increase of minus seventy thousand?
So, that was about four, three, three and a half percent?
Yep, if you're not, um, in thirty-six, an increase of a hundred point four nine.
And that really isn't, that's really not discretionary, is it? That's state mandated.
We budget exactly based on the known needs when we use the budget. As warning and caution, that doesn't include kindergarten, because kindergarten screenings weren't done when the budget was formulated, but this is the number we'll make it work.
Article thirty-seven. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for career and technical education. School board of directors recommends zero, budget committee recommends the same. Career and technical education will be provided through R.S.U. one, as included in the tuition Article thirty-eight. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for other instruction. School board of directors recommends forty-five hundred dollars, the budget committee recommends the same. This article includes costs to provide students with learning experiences not included under other programs, i.e., co-curricular, extracurricular activities. Article thirty-nine. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for student and staff support. School board of directors recommends three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. The budget committee recommends the same. This article covers salaries and benefits for guidance, health, technology, improvement of instruction, staff development, library, and student assessment.
I'm going to, all these six-figure numbers, I'm going to ask for the increase.
It's an increase of thirty-seven thousand. Ten thousand of that is a new server, server we got currently has well exceeded its life expectancy, and so we need to upgrade that.
So, it's about eight percent without the server, not having the server, okay.
Article forty. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for system administration. School board directors, school board of directors recommends one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-five cents. The budget committee recommends the same. This article provides salaries and benefits for the office of superintendent. It also covers expenses for the school board of directors, financial software, insurance, advertising dues, and fees, legal services, and auditing expenses.
That's a ninety thousand increase?
Nine.
Ninety thousand?
Ninety thousand.
Nine. Seven thousand of that is a placeholder where we put, we put seven thousand for the due payroll taxes, we're going to have to start paying in January for pay-to-leave. Instead of trying to break it all out, you get all the different cost centers, you just put it in a somewhere like older than that.
So, you're talking less than two percent.
Article forty-one. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for social administration. School administration, social, yeah, I'm going to read this for hours. School board directors recommends two hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. The budget committee recommends the same. This article includes salaries and benefits for the principal and staff, and support staff. It includes equipment, supplies, dues, fees, and contracted services.
Seventy-nine hundred dollar increase.
So, three and a half percent again.
Article forty-two. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for transportation. School board of directors recommends one hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The budget committee recommends the same. This article covers expenses for transportation, transporting students to grades K through twelve and from school.
Reduction of seventy-four hundred dollars?
Reduction, we like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Article forty-three. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for facilities maintenance. School board of directors recommends two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. The budget committee recommends the same. This article covers expenses for facilities, operations, and contracted services for the West Bath school and grounds.
For reduction of forty-four hundred dollars.
Article forty-four. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for debt service and other commitments. School board of directors recommends zero, the budget committee recommends the same. There is no current outstanding indebtedness relating to West Bath school. Article forty-five. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for other expenditures, including food service. School board of directors recommends fifty thousand dollars, the budget committee recommends the same. This article covers expenses related to the food service program. Article forty-six. To see what sum the town will appropriate, yes, okay, sorry, to see what sum the town will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, and to see what sum the town will raise and assess as the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in accordance with the Maine Revised Statute Title twenty-a, Section one-five-six-eight-eight. School board of directors recommends total appropriation, appropriated two million, seven hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. The school board, the school board of director recommends total raise two million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and ten cents. State mandated explanation: The town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Act, is the amount of money determined by the state law to be the minimum amount that the town must raise and assess to receive full amount of state dollars.
So, I'll summarize that real quick. The state has this magic calculator that we all know doesn't work real well. That has identified certain components of education as essential programs and services. When you factor in those identified items, our budget is two, two million, seven hundred and forty thousand. In order to get any state subsidy, we have to raise from local taxes a minimum of the twenty-four forty-two.
And we get the rest from the state, then, the gap?
We would. That's the next article.
I have right ahead. Okay, Article forty-seven. Written ballot required. To see what sum the town will raise and appropriate in addition, in additional local funds, the school board of directors recommends one million, nine hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, which exceeds, exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by the school board of, by, the school board of directors recommends one million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board of directors. The school board of directors recommends one million, nine hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents for additional local funds, and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model by one million, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and six hundred and ninety-two cents, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Let me say it again, one million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. The additional funds, local funds, represent local costs to support school budget programs and services that are not included in the state's funding model, including costs for transportation and special education. The additional local funds are those locally raised funds over and above the town's local contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, that will help to achieve the budget of additional programs.
So, these are all the required things we have to provide, but the state hasn't been decided. And this is what probably, and just to clarify, forty-six and forty-seven aren't appropriating additional funds, they're just summarizing the prior articles, and how they relate back to essential programs and services. Not as relevant in West Bath, since we're a minimum receiver, so we don't get the larger state subsidies. These numbers will look a lot different if people within the community had an equitable chair of state funding.
Keith, could you please explain to the group, because I think a lot of people don't understand this, what minimal, minimal requirement is for?
I will try. I've been doing this, this is my tenth budget, and I'm not a hundred percent certain even I understand it all, but essentially, the state has determined that there are certain communities in the state of Maine that, due to the value of their real estate, their property, and just to clarify, this is independent from the revaluation, so they're not tied together. The state planning office has determined that the value of our property is high enough that, for lack of a better way of saying it, we can afford to pay more.
But how do, how do people stand here? Difference, the state is, what I, what I, I've been going to some of the school board meetings, because I'm interested in things going on there, and, and the state says that they're supporting like fifty-five percent, is that the right number in that ballpark?
The target is fifty-five, yeah.
Fifty-five percent of the cost of education in the entire state of Maine is coming from the state government to all the school districts, except for the forty or forty-one.
Essentially, you're correct, just one, one clarifying point, they're saying they're paying fifty-five percent of the essential programs and services. So, special ed, transportation, I believe, system administration, those aren't considered essential, though we're required to have them, but the state is saying they're paying fifty-five percent of essential. Our state subsidy is about, and you can double-check my math, because you've been doing percentages a lot quicker, about six point one, six point two percent of our total budget is our state subsidy. You know, glimmer of hope, and we've been working on this for a decade, some people, a lot more than that, there's a slight glimmer of hope. In this last legislative session, they at least approved and paid for a study to find a more equitable way of funding education. And I'm, I'm working hard with our state representative, try to at least be a voice in that conversation, either informally or formally, but it's, it's essential that West Bath is heard on that front.
In particular, what is the state position in perhaps a more equitable funding for special education? Special education following the student.
Yeah, that's, that's part of this study. There is also maybe a, you know, even a slighter glimmer of hope. There's still a bill that's still technically alive in the legislature, at least until Friday, that would bump that reimbursement rate from fifty percent to fifty-five percent. It passed last year and never got paid for. It got passed again this year and isn't paid for, but as part of that final appropriation supplemental that they're running on on Friday, that bill, I believe, is still technically alive. I'm not saying we're going to get five more percent, but we can all hope for it.
Okay, last article. Article forty-eight. To see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for the fiscal year beginning July twenty-twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, for the school administrative units' contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Fund Act, Funding Act, local funds for non-state funding, school construction, debt service, additional local funds for school purposes under the Maine Revised Statute Title twenty-a, Section one-five-six-nine-zero, undissided fund balance, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of school. School board directors recommend, recommends four million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. The budget committee recommends the same. This article is a summary article and approves expenditures of the purpose, of the proposed budget of four million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. This article authorizes the school board of directors to spend revenues on the amounts appropriated in the previous articles. This article does not raise any additional money. Estimated revenue sources are local contribution, two million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and ten cents. Annual local contribution, one million, nine hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. EPS state subsidy, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Carryover from twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four is twenty-five thousand, with a total of four million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Oh, shoot. I lied, and I, hoping. Article forty-nine. Shall the school board of directors be authorized to transfer amounts exceeding five percent of the total appropriation for any cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year, provided that transfers shall not be permitted to increase the authorized total school budget? The school board of directors recommends a yes vote. Article fifty. Aid for other programs. In addition to the amount in Article fourteen, shall the school board of directors be authorized to accept and expend any state, federal, or other grant aids and receipts during the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, for school purposes, provided that such grants, aid, and receipts do not require the expenditure of other local funds not previously appropriated? The school board recommends a yes vote. Article fifty-one. In the event the town receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in this budget, the school board of directors, shall the school board of directors be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidies to increase expenditures for school purposes and cost centers categories approved by the school board of directors, increase the allocation of finances in a reserve fund approved by the school board of directors, and/or decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Title twenty-a, Section one-five-six-seven-one-a-oneb for local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school board of directors. The school board recommends a yes vote. The registered voters will be available at the West Bath town hall until four P.M., and at the West Bath school board, school from five-thirty until closing for purpose of correcting the voter list and accept new enrollments. Now, I'm done. Need more ice tea? It is ice tea, take a look. Okay. Any questions? All right then. I move adjourned. All righty then, thanks for coming.